Call to order this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council on September 17th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Ruff? Rallo? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. That's my Rallo?
Here.
Okay. Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stasberg?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Starting off the meeting tonight, just a little bit of historical information. I found it notable that on this day in 1787, the U.S. Constitution was signed. And before today, I probably had not actually read the Constitution since I was, you know, in some U.S. history course as a teenager. And I did that today, and it was very interesting and related. There's been, you know, conversation and news stories related to whether or not we're in a constitutional crisis, and I'm not going to speculate on that. But it was really interesting to read the Constitution as an adult and as a legislator, and it just hits a little bit different than it did as a teenager. So if you haven't read it in terms of the duties and responsibilities related to the different branches of government in a while, I would recommend that you revisit that, just because it is interesting. And then next, going on to our agenda summation. Before we do that, I actually believe that we need to amend the agenda tonight. So I guess that I need to make a motion to move Agenda Item 7A, Ordinance 2025-33, to the last item under legislation for second readings and resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The reason for that needs, it's related to the staff that would need to present that ordinance. So we just need to move that down the agenda due to staff schedule. Yep, so Ordinance 2025-33, moving down to the end of the agenda. So we have a motion and a second to do that. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo? Can we do anything about the sound from Councilmember Rallo, because I'm having a hard time hearing him? Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Heard that, thank you. Great, thank you so much. So now for our agenda summation. First, we will have one set of minutes for approval from February 19th of this year. That will be followed by reports, starting by reports from council members, and then the mayor and city offices, where we will have a report from the Bloomington Housing Authority. We will have any council committee reports, which I do not believe we have any tonight, and then our first period of reports from the public, where members of the public can make a comment on items not on the agenda tonight. We do not have any appointments to boards and commissions this evening. We have four pieces of legislation for first reading. We start with Ordinance 2025-35 to amend Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water. And then Ordinance 2025-36, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the City of Bloomington of certain extensions and improvements to the city's water utility. Then we'll have appropriation Ordinance 2025-08, transferring funds from the general fund to the fiber connectivity fund, and then appropriation Ordinance 2025-09 to appropriate general fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated. And then we will have legislation for second readings and resolutions. So per the change that we just made, we will start with Ordinance 2025-34 to establish a fund for the proceeds of the surety bond related to the fiber optics network. Then we will have Resolution 2025-16 requesting the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission to make a recommendation for expenses from those revenues. Then we will have Resolution 2025-15 to establish expectations and procedures for council member liaisons to boards and commissions. And then finally, as our last item of legislation for this evening, we will go back to Ordinance 2025-33 to establish the fiber connectivity fund for digital opportunity initiatives. Then we will have an additional period of public comment if there are any other members of the public wishing to make a comment on items not on the agenda, any notes on council schedule, and then we will adjourn. So if we could start with those minutes.
I move that the minutes from February 9th be approved.
19th.
19th, yes. February 19th. I'm typo, sorry.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from February 19th of this year, and just as a note, there was a slightly revised version of those sent out this afternoon that was made a small grammatical adjustment. Does anybody have any questions about those minutes? Great. Will the clerk please call the roll on that? Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you. Great, thank you. All those were approved. Now we're moving into reports from council members. Let's go ahead and start to my left with Councilmember Daley.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to quickly put a shout out for anybody who might still be interested in applying for any boards and commissions. There are still some openings. We would love to have some more applications come in. And also, if you've applied previously and did not get appointed to a board and commission, that not necessarily was, you know, a personal thing. We only have so many seats available, and we have so many great applicants that we don't always have seats available for everyone. So if you're still interested, please go back and reapply again, because I know we would love to have some of our former interviewers put in another application and possibly have another chance to get on a board and commission. So we hope to see you at some of our interviews. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulik?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Asari?
No report.
Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I do have a report, and I request that staff put, I have a little PowerPoint to go through. This is about requesting that the council sign on to a letter to oppose the Environmental Protection Agency's reconsideration of the 2009 endangerment finding. So I did reach out to some of you individually about this. So if we could go to the next slide, what is the endangerment finding? So in 2009, the Environmental Protection Agency made a formal determination that the concentration of six major greenhouse gases in the atmosphere, such as carbon dioxide and methane, endangers public health and welfare. And that finding serves as a legal basis for the EPA to regulate greenhouse gas emissions under the Clean Air Act. Next slide, please. So if the EPA repeals that finding, it would have major impacts across the country, including Bloomington. It would effectively remove the legal basis for many current regulations on climate pollution. It would also pave the way for the rollback of federal standards for vehicle and industrial emissions, leading to increased emissions of those pollutants. Next slide. So it is relevant to all communities, including Bloomington, because ultimately, a reversal of this finding would increase air pollution, threatening the health of our population. It would increase the pace of climate change impacts, such as severe storms, flooding, and heat. And eventually, of course, it would increase the societal disruption due to climate change, which will have impacts ranging from food distribution, climate refugees, local financial burdens that we are unprepared to face. So there's a letter that has been drafted by the Public Rights Project that is going to be submitted as part of the comment period to the EPA as they consider whether to repeal the endangerment finding. And the letter says, and these are direct quotes from the letter, these are actual subject headings, if we could go to the next slide. "The endangerment finding is grounded in evidence and sound science, including federal climate assessments," and the letter has footnotes to actually point to those studies. "Local governments rely on the EPA regulation of greenhouse gases and the proposed rule," which is the repeal of the finding. "The proposed rule fails to consider the significant harms to local communities." So some examples: extreme heat is now commonplace, transportation emissions and air pollution are worsening across the U.S., flooding and major weather events are bringing grave consequences, local communities are bearing unprecedented infrastructure costs, and the EPA's proposed rule will have disproportionate impacts on low-income people and communities of color. So, next slide, what is the Public Rights Project? Why are they, why am I coming forward with this letter from them? Well, it's an organization. It's nonpartisan, nonprofit, national organization that provides litigation support, legal representation, and training to help local government officials protect their communities. And this is their word, use their tremendous power for good. So I like that wording. So what I'm asking this evening, last slide, please, is a vote on the letter, which I have forwarded to council members, and it will be part of the official public record once we take a vote. So a vote from you all to sign on to the letter. The deadline is September 22nd, so I'm sorry there wasn't a lot of advance notice on this, but the deadline is before our next meeting, so. That is my report, and I would appreciate if somebody could make a motion to support the letter.
A motion, so, or so moved, or do I need to give a full motion? Okay, I motion that the council adopt the letter as written.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to sign on to the letter as it's written. Are there any comments from council members? Councilmember Flaherty?
Just a brief thank you to Councilmember Piedmont Smith for bringing this. The endangerment finding and EPA's obligation to regulate greenhouse gas emissions as a pollutant that is causing harm in our communities, including Bloomington, is really important. So I appreciate this opportunity for Bloomington to weigh in, along with other communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Okay, I'll also echo some thanks and also point out that through our Economic and Sustainable Development Department, we have various grants and things like that, different programs for Bloomington residents, especially with regard to extreme heat, and there's been various studies about, like, tree canopy and that kind of thing. So it, climate change does have this very, like, monetary local impact in terms of what we need to do in order to support our residents in these times and in this climate change. So I also appreciate her bringing this forward. So with that, if the clerk could please call the roll on the support of that letter? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're still doing reports from council members, so Councilmember Ruff? Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
No report, thanks.
And moving online, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, briefly, is my mic working?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Briefly, I just wanted to address that political violence has no place in our society. I want to condemn what occurred last Wednesday with the assassination of Charlie Kirk. We should hold ourselves to a standard of civil debate, debate of ideas, debate of policy propositions, but we must condemn political violence. It cannot be the means by which we settle political differences. And to add to that, neither should government use political violence as aiding an excuse to limit our free speech and expression. Thanks.
Thank you. I also have a report. I need to get back to it. I had a couple of things that I wanted to mention. One was at the Plan Commission meeting on September 8th. So that was last week. This is the first regular session since then. The Plan Commission did forward language related to single-room occupancy, which was a resolution that council sent to them. So what they did was they decided to change the residential rooming house use to single-room occupancy, and then they have updated related definitions and standards. So the Plan Commission voted 7-1 to forward this with a positive recommendation, and so we will take it up at council. I'm trying to think of the calendar off the top of my head, probably after budget stuff, in late October, early November. Second, a little update on the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Commission. Last Friday, we voted on several changes to the Transportation Improvement Plan, or TIP, and two of them that I wanted to point out, which I think that I've mentioned before, but I can't remember for sure, and I think it's worth repeating because I'm excited about it, is construction of a sidewalk along the bypass between North Walnut and Kinzer, and then also reconstruction of the pedestrian bridge that goes over the bypass there by Arlington. That pedestrian bridge apparently has inadequate clearance, and so they are going to replace it. And both of those projects have the majority of that funding in 2029. So those are just two things that hopefully will improve some of the pedestrian infrastructure in that kind of northwest quadrant of Bloomington. Third, I want to point out that I scheduled a constituent meeting for this Sunday, September 21st, on Zoom. It is at 1:30 on Zoom. Usually my constituent meetings are Saturday mornings in person, but as I mentioned a few weeks ago, cross-country season really changes my Saturday mornings in the fall, so I will have that constituent meeting this coming Sunday on Zoom, and you can find that link on the calendar. And lastly, I appreciate that Councilmember Rallo pointed out that political violence has no place in society, but I also want to point out that there was a school shooting last Wednesday as well. And school shootings also have no place in society, and it is absurd to me that there is, has been greater reaction over one person than over hundreds of schoolchildren who have been shot over the last 25 years. So, thank you. Moving on to reports from the mayor and city offices, with a report from the Bloomington Housing Authority. You can come up and introduce yourself for the record, and go ahead.
It's coming, okay. Good evening. My name is Nathan Ferreira. I am the newish executive director for the Bloomington Housing Authority. Tonight, I wanted to give you kind of a broad overview of what we're doing. There are some budget numbers, like in years past, but I don't know if we're behind this year or what, but I don't have a full budget to present or to share with you tonight. So I'm going to jump right in there. Feel free to stop me if you have questions, or I can answer questions at the end. As it says on our seal there, "We strengthen opportunity, beginning but not ending with housing." Essentially, like other housing authorities, we're responsible for administering public funds, using whatever resources we can to allow us to provide affordable housing in the community, and to foster self-sufficiency through creative partnerships. Some stats that might be interesting. So you've probably heard about the RAD, the Rental Assistance Demonstration. So in April, we closed on our second RAD, which basically means we technically don't have public housing in Bloomington anymore. We have switched through what is Low-Income Housing Tax Credit deal that's just available for housing authorities. All of our units, so that's Walnut Woods, Reverend Butler, and Crestmont are now part of these investor-supported housing authority properties. So that changes a little bit about how we operate. It means we're accountable to more than you all. We have investors that we have to answer to on a very regular basis, I'm discovering. So housing authorities, we are, we were established federally, were chartered through the state of Indiana, and we're accountable locally. So that's kind of how we operate. Locally, what that means is our seven commissioners are appointed by the mayor, and they provide kind of broad guidance of how our organization operates, not so much day-to-day, not personnel decisions, not even residential decisions, but more policy and financing, and so they guide us in that way. Ninety percent of our funding is federal. The rest of our funding comes from tenant rents and from various grants. So we are, this year has been a roller coaster in terms of watching what's going to happen with the federal budget. As you all probably also realize, it's looking like it'll probably be a continuing resolution at this point, which is probably our best-case scenario. So our numbers that we're creating are based on kind of maintaining the levels that we're at. Section 8, we serve just over 1,700 households. There's several different kinds of vouchers mixed in there, which I'll touch on in a moment. That's about 3,400 individuals. We have long, long wait lists, so this is by no means meeting the need. And residents pay no more than 30% of their income toward housing. Depending on the project, it's, your AMI and what you can qualify for depends on the project. Our RADs are all less than 50% area median income is how they qualify for our units. This is, I would say, all of our programs, Housing Choice Vouchers, I'll get into a little more. We are growing our resident services. We have found that it's really critical to add supportive services in-house. We don't, we're not really interested in becoming a social services agency, and I really don't think that's our role, but our, we can add some things to tighten up the backend, where sometimes families get evicted, that if they had had some services intervened, they probably wouldn't have been evicted. So those are Family Self-Sufficiency, which is a savings program which is designed to get people off of public assistance, set some goals, and actually move toward leaving public assistance altogether. That's about 80 participants normally. We actually have a position that we're trying to hire for at the moment in that program. We have the RASH program, which is Resident Opportunities and Self-Sufficiency. This is our partnering with any number of other organizations in the community to bring in services for our residents. It's community events, it's, we have a grocery shuttle because we're in a bit of a food desert, which has been super successful. That's through the Health Department, a grant through the Health Department. Landlord Risk Mitigation, which is an incentive program for landlords to work with us. It's been a bit on pause, but it sounds like that funding is coming back. We've actually noticed a decrease in our utilization of vouchers, and meaning the number of people that have vouchers, we usually hover around 70%. We're down to about 68% this year, and it seems pretty clear that it's tied to our landlord risk mitigation program having their funding paused. So that should be coming back in, and then we can continue to increase that utilization. And then eviction prevention, this is pretty limited, but for our most vulnerable families, we're trying to offer services again, so they are not evicted from our program. I'm going to go into more depth with Summit Hill in a moment, but that is our nonprofit. It is controlled by our commissioners. It's a separate board that has a couple additional board members in addition to the commissioners, and I will say more in a moment. So Housing Choice Vouchers, we have 1721. Project-based vouchers, you can see the number there. Most recently, we middleway applied for some project-based vouchers, and we were able to grant those, and as they have more units get inspected, we'll be able to add some more project-based vouchers there. We have VASH, so that's for veterans. We have some single-room occupancy, and before you get excited about that, given the other changes that are coming with the UDO, hopefully, HUD has no interest in granting more SROs. In terms of vouchers, we've already checked, but the project-based vouchers that we can grant are pretty flexible, so it could be that we can use those in SRO developments. We're looking into that now. The Emergency Housing Voucher Program started with COVID relief, and those are going away. Those phase out next year, so we are working to get those remaining voucher holders on to our Housing Choice Voucher Program, so they don't, they don't lose housing or housing assistance. And then we have 12 currently in our HAP, which is the homeowner program, where you can actually convert a voucher to a mortgage payment. And so we're using that through our community land trust, but also in the community. Several participants have just used that to buy a house on the market. We have over 18 million in HAP that passes through the Housing Authority and pays landlords. And I had some numbers crunched because I wanted you to see how many of those are just local mom-and-pop landlords that have, you know, probably less than five units that are working with us. And just if that HAP, if the voucher subsidy gets cut federally, you can imagine the impact that's going to have on our local economy, so it's really critical, and we've been doing the advocacy that we can to ensure that that does not happen. But anybody listening, please call your senators. And those are our waits currently. So our RAD waits are by bedroom. Our Housing Choice Voucher, we just closed that waiting list in April, so you can see it's quite high. And so that's already, before we open the waiting list, we go through and kind of clean it up, and a lot of people have found housing, and it climbed this, to that number in basically about six weeks, so it was very quick. Summit Hill Community Development Corporation, this is our nonprofit that was established in 2019. You may have heard of Core Community Flats. It is underway. If you drive down Rogers, you will see the historic Core Building being redeveloped. We are actually, I'm quite shocked we are on target in terms of our timeline, so those 38 units should come on early summer next year. That does include nine PSH, so Permanent Supportive Housing Units, which are the same kind of units in Crawford. We are doing something a little differently in that there's also project-based vouchers there, so it's, it's kind of mixed between the PPVs and the Permanent Supportive Housing Units. So we're hopeful about that. Chandler Early Learning Center, this is named after the Reverend Dr. Chandler, Marvin Chandler, who is a local, locally born and mostly raised up on the hill, civil rights leader and world-renowned musician. So we will be dedicating the Early Learning Center in his honor. That'll have 28 seats for infants and toddlers on the first floor, and then three two-bedroom affordable apartments on the second floor. And then we have the Summit Hill Community Land Trust. We still hear the question of why the City of Bloomington doesn't have a land trust, and I just want to set the record straight. There is a land trust. It's different than many land trusts. It did not start as a grassroots project. It's a bit odd in that sense because it was started by the municipality, but this is a trend. There are more and more municipalities that are giving land and funding to basically get a land trust started. So we've got nine homes right now over, off of, what's it called, Atlas on 17th. North of there is where our property is. We are on the search for new properties. Potential projects, we have funding, partial funding for a fourplex pilot that will be part of our land trust. The thinking here is that we can replicate this and maybe get pre-approved plans, and some of the other new developments, such as Hopewell or the larger development on the southwest side, that we could have a model fourplex to be able to go in there at a middle-income range, so 80 to 120% AMI. We are getting pretty far down the road in partnership with Mother Hubbard's Cupboard to purchase the four-and-a-half lots east of Mother Hubbard's and partner with them on a, on a development that would incorporate gardens and community space for their services, and a cottage development as part of the land trust. So we're excited about that. We're obviously trying to generate funds at this point, but that would be the next step for our land trust. You've heard of transit-oriented development. There's also food-oriented development. That's kind of the model that we're, we're looking at. Essential Function Bonds is something else we're exploring. Housing authorities, as a semi-governmental agency, we can actually issue bonds, and some housing authorities are beginning to do these projects for workforce housing. It's totally separate from HUD. You're not under their thumb for any of that kind of development, so you can actually set the income up to 120%. And last, Fair Cloth RAD, just really quickly. Fair Cloth is the, the Fair Cloth limit is how much every housing authority, how many public housing units they are permitted. The ones we have developed is, are well below what we're permitted. So there's another Lytech deal that could be possible where you do the Lytech with your, essentially creating more public housing that immediately converts to RAD at closing. So we're excited about that. That would be potentially 185 additional housing authority units. So we'll, we will see. That's probably years off, but. So this is what our revenue is looking like for next year. That HUD admin is basically what operates our, our authority. We have a number of ARPA grants that are being spent down, but will primarily be spent down in 2026. One of those, I'll just mention, with the land trust, there's additional money to make the land trust homes affordable to buyers under 60% AMI. So that's where some of that ARPA money is going from. I think it originally was with Heading Home. And then a number of other projects, including the one with the Health Foundation and the Grocery Shuttle, we have a number of miscellaneous grants, and then we're also working with the Digital Equity Program. I think it's called Digital Opportunity now, and hoping to grow that. So I will wrap up here and answer any questions you have. Common denominator for us about why we've been able to develop affordable housing, it's, you know, it's partly funding and partnerships, but really, the land has been contributed in every case. So I don't know, I, my request is that the city really consider, how do you free up land for affordable housing development? Because that is what makes it possible for us. The land trust, the RAD housing, we already owned it. The Early Learning Center is on a long-term lease, so pushing that however we can. Happy to be a part of that conversation, obviously. Continuing to reduce barriers to missing middle housing. I was sorry to miss last week's meeting, but we are definitely in support of anything that's going to reduce lot sizes, allow us to split them. There's a whole long list of things we would love to see happen. More plexes, opportunity for small apartment buildings. All of those things are things we can develop, so if, if given the right tools. I would love to see incentives based on housing type instead of tied to the buyer or renter income. I think that could free up some, some energy there to actually buy the kind, or build the kind of housing that we want. Partnerships are really key to our long-term success. In my short time in this role, the families that are really struggling in our services are only successful if we have partner social service providers coming in. So that extended case management that you've probably heard about is absolutely critical. The whole homelessness conversation and press is absolutely critical, but it kind of sucks all the air out of the room, and we need to also consider the families that are at risk of being evicted and focus some energy on keeping those folks housed so they don't end up unhoused. So those are my, I'm sure I have other things I'm forgetting, but those are the things I really wanted to stress with you all, and I appreciate you having me here tonight. I am also happy to share more budget numbers as we solidify that, so happy to come back. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you. Questions, councilmember, sorry?
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, Director Ferrera. This was the first time, and I don't know, I might just be particularly uninformed, that I had heard about the freezing of the Risk Mitigation Fund, the Landlord Mitigation Fund. Could you tell us a bit more context? Who froze it? What are we talking about when you say that it's frozen?
Froze might have been the wrong word. It, it originally was ARPA, and that we discovered that you cannot use ARPA in a rotating account, essentially. So money coming, coming in and going out, ARPA cannot be used that way. So we've been scrambling to find another source to cover that, and it sounds like the city's going to help do that. We're just kind of waiting on that budget to get approved.
And can you help us understand the size, the, the size of that fund?
We requested 200,000.
200,000?
From hand.
200,000 was, was how much we had allocated from ARPA funds that were sort of in a revolving?
No, we had already spent quite a bit of those ARPA funds, so 200,000 was closer to what was left.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I have another question, but it's on a different topic, so I'll, I'll come back in a second.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. Your slide about budget said you get $936,000 in grants, in city grants? Is that, can you tell me more about that? Are there various grant programs?
It's, it is predominantly ARPA. So, and these, those funds are actually funds that are not associated with Early Learning Center or CORE. So the four-plex pilot is 400, or is 250,000. The eviction prevention that we got from ARPA is 60,000. The, you're going to test my memory here. Oh, the CLT subsidy, the land trust subsidy is another 250,000. And that's, I think, primarily what we're getting for the remaining ARPA, and that was primarily from the Heading Homes funds. And then we were, we had also applied for CDBG and were awarded, but those funds haven't been released to us yet. So that's going to pay for playgrounds at Walnut Woods. I can get you a breakdown of specifics, but I don't, I don't have it all in my head, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rallo.
Thanks for your presentation. You mentioned involved, city involvement in freeing up land for affordable housing. It could be direct purchase, maybe, these might be one avenue. Do you have other ideas of how the city would be involved in doing so?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch all the, all the question. Can you repeat that again?
You mentioned freeing up land, having land for affordability for affordable housing. Do you have ideas?
I know that right now, to get land, there has to be two appraisals and it has to be purchased. That's my understanding of the process. I would love, I don't know if there's a way to change that, but making it so land can be donated for affordable housing to projects, I think, would, would be great. I don't know the full list of what land the city owns. It could also be, you know, partnering to purchase land. We will continue to request funds for, for that purpose as well. But yeah, freeing up the land that's city-owned that may not be doing anything right now would be our, primarily what I was thinking of.
I see. Okay, thanks for that clarification. That's interesting.
Sure.
Look into that.
Great.
Thank you. There's a 20 minutes reserved for the section of the agenda, and we have gone through 20 minutes at this point. Are there further questions that can't wait? Thank you so much, Mr. Ferrera. I appreciate the report. I might follow up with a couple of things that I didn't have time to ask.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. All right, there were no council committee reports, so then we move into our first period of, of public comment. So if you're a member of the public and would like to make a comment on an item not on the agenda, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium. You will have up to three minutes. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the raise hand function, or you can send a chat message to the host. And it looks like we have somebody here in chambers, so please state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. It's good to see you all. I was here last weekend, three minutes really wasn't enough time. It actually pertains to housing, affordable housing. Our, our neighborhood, a very nice house, beautiful little house on a wooded lot, has been bought, and now they tell me they're going to tear it down, turn it into a four-plex. Okay. One thing I should say, just to start with, my dad was the head of Urban Renewal here in Bloomington. They built literally hundreds of houses out there on the west side of the town, and man, we needed it. I mean, people were living in, in houses with wooden floors, or wood floors, with dirt floors. So I'm not opposed to housing for poor people. What I am opposed to deeply is this idea that you can just come into a neighborhood and say, hey, you know, we've decided this, and it's for, you know, the greater good and so forth, and the neighborhood has no say in it. I think that's wrong. Okay, I've, I've written this down. I don't know if you all got it. I don't think you did. I'd like to form a request that a vote be taken by the council for an amendment to the UDO code that would allow for a vote by all residents living within a neighborhood association to have the final say about whether or not a four-plex goes on. Okay, running out of time. May I ask you, with a show of hands, who is not in favor of a measure to give members of the neighborhood, not just formal members of the neighborhood association, to decide by a vote whether a four-plex UDO should be built in their neighborhood? Could I have a show of hands? The people who are not in favor of that?
We don't, we don't usually have a back and forth with, with members of the public right now. We don't usually have a back and forth with members of the public.
I can't ask that, or?
You can ask it, we're just not necessarily going to answer it.
I can't ask by a show of hands? Well, anyway, I, I think, I don't know, read what I, read what I had to say. I think there should be an amendment to this UDO thing that allows for the neighborhood to decide whether this thing is going to progress. Okay, zero.
Yep, your time is up.
I don't know, could you pass that down?
Yes, it was passed down.
Okay, thanks, everybody. I don't mean that, I think you guys.
Mr. Lindemeyer, in the future, in the future, if you have something to hand to council members, if you could give it to council staff when you come in, instead of approaching the podium, that would be great.
I couldn't hear a word you said, I'm sorry.
In, in the future, if you have something to give to council members at a meeting, if you could give it to council staff instead of coming up to the podium, that would be I think we have another person here in chambers for public comment. Go ahead and state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Sarah Owen. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator for the Exodus Refugee Immigration Office here in Bloomington. Exodus is dedicated to the protection of human rights by serving the resettlement needs of refugees and other displaced people fleeing persecution, injustice, and war by welcoming them to Indiana. First and foremost, we'd like to extend our thanks to Councilwoman Zulik, our district representative, for taking the time to come and tour our new office space some weeks back, and for sitting down to learn more about Exodus's work. We would also like to recognize the Bloomington Police Department for their support in recent months. We have utilized BPD this year for several crisis situations. All situations were handled professionally and with care, ensuring no further escalation of the situation. In one instance in particular, officers went above and beyond to ensure care of our clients. So we appreciate their efforts and their approach to our clients in these situations. Today, Exodus wanted to take the opportunity to speak to the city council about what we believe is an essential need for city operations, and that it, and that is to work into its budget the cost of a contracted language line or language interpretation service. This would be a major step in ensuring equitable access to city resources for all Bloomington residents. Naturally, the highest priority for a contracted interpretation service would be to serve as a resource for our first responders. In times of crisis intervention, people need to be able to make, need to be able to understand all essential information, whether it's making decisions, excuse me, decisions about urgent medical care, or fully understanding their rights if they are being questioned or detained. In reference to the thank you that was extended to BPD a moment ago, I would be remiss if I did not note that Exodus has, on more than one occasion, been the conduit to ensure that interpretation was provided in instances of police intervention. Had we not had our own contracted language line available to call, who's to say how much frustration and confusion and even fear may have been factors in those situations? It's worth noting that of the nearly 500 people that we have welcomed to Bloomington, our clients alone represent over 20 different languages. And the necessity of a contracted interpretation service does not end with the need for emergency situations. If our immigrant neighbors need to be connected to more resources through CFRD, or if they need to report a negligent landlord to hand, or if they even wish to register their child for Bloomington youth basketball through the Parks Department, we believe that Exodus clients and any other non-English speaker who calls Bloomington their home should have the right to easily access any and all city services. If the city were to prioritize the cost of such a contract and have a language line that was readily available to all of its department, that investment comes with a promise that Exodus Refugee will personally provide training free of charge to all city departments so that city personnel are knowledgeable in how to properly use a phone interpretation service. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else here in chambers right now for public comment. Has anybody raised a hand on Zoom? No, okay. Seeing none, we'll move on from the public comment period. There are no appointments to boards and commissions, so we're on to legislation for first readings, and I am without my parliamentarian right now, so does somebody want to make the motions?
I move that, thank you. I move that Ordinance 2025-35 be read by title and synopsis, be introduced and read by title and synopsis only by the clerk.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to introduce and read Ordinance 2025-35. We need to do a roll call vote on everything tonight because we do have a member online, so will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley? Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-35 to amend Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water Rate Adjustment. The synopsis is as follows: This ordinance amends the rates and charges in Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water to reflect increased costs of supplying water and services to customers and to make debt service payments on bond financing for required capital improvements.
I move that...
Thank, thank you. Go ahead. I wasn't sure if she was done. Yeah, do the next one.
I move that Ordinance 2025-36 be read by title and synopsis only by the clerk.
Second.
So moved and seconded to introduce 20, Ordinance 2025-36. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Councilmember Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-36, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the city of Bloomington, Indiana of certain extensions and improvements to the city's waterworks utility, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the cost thereof, and the... and the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such waterworks utility and other related matters. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes, oops, the City of Bloomington to issue one or more series of its waterworks revenue bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $71 million, a portion of which are anticipated to be issued in 2026, and the remainder in 2028. The bonds will be issued to finance all or a portion of the cost of design, engineering, acquisition, construction, the equipping and improvement of capital projects related to the Monroe Water Treatment Plant, the Water Works Distribution System, and Water Main, and a new service center and maintenance buildings and pay costs of the issuance of the bonds.
Thank you.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2025-08 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to introduce appropriation ordinance 2025-08. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Yes. Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Munt Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2025-08, to transfer funds from the General Fund to the Fiber Connectivity Fund and specially appropriate funds not otherwise budgeted. The synopsis is as follows. Appropriation ordinance 2025-08 transfers funding from the General Fund to the Fiber Connectivity Fund and appropriates that funding for the ITS Department per the city's master development agreement with Meridium/Hoosier Network/, I'm not sure if this is a typo or not, M Street Fiber or Fiber.
Thank you. I don't believe that is a typo. I think we looked that up.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2025-09 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce appropriation ordinance 2025-09. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Munt Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2025-09, to specially appropriate from the General Fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated. The synopsis is as follows. Appropriation ordinance 2025-09 additionally appropriates funding from the General Fund for expenses in the ITS Department, for expenses in the Engineering Department that have been reimbursed by Indiana University, and to approve a transfer between categories in the clerk's office budget.
Thank you. Those four ordinances will be heard for second reading at our next regular session meeting. And I really wanted to put a note on this. That is on Tuesday, September 30th. Tuesday, September 30th, because the Wednesday of that week is Yom Kippur, so we are not meeting on that day. And the second reading for those will count as required public hearing on those pieces of legislation that require that. So, moving on to our second readings and resolutions. And as a reminder, we voted to amend the agenda earlier this evening to change the order of these.
I move that ordinance 2025-34 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-34. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Just one moment, please. Ordinance 2025, oh, my, sorry. It's habit. Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Munt Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-34, to establish a fund for the proceeds of the surety bonds secured for work on Fiber Optics Network for the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance establishes a dedicated non-reverting fund to hold the $1 million received in the surety bond payment on bond number 1160465 was called due to failure by Meridium Infrastructure North America Corporation subcontractor, AEG, to properly install fiber within the city limits. Damages were incurred by the city, and certain notice of violations were issued by the City of Bloomington Engineering Department against AEG, who was working on Meridium's behalf for violations of Title 12 of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding work performed in the right of way. Appropriations of the funds will be requested by the City of Bloomington Controller to the city council at a later date.
Thank you.
I move ordinance 2025-34 be adopted.
Second.
Great. It looks like we have the controller here to present. If you could, oh. Okay, maybe we have the city attorney here to present. Whoever. Okay. If you could make sure to introduce yourself for the record. We just barely started 2025-34.
Thank you. I'm Marjorie Rice, Corporation Counsel for the City of Bloomington. And I am out of breath. But I will tell you, I avoided falling down the stairs, which is great. I am here to ask for a fund to be created. And this is really a kind of small housekeeping matter related to a much larger issue. I'm gonna explain the larger issue just briefly to give context for why I'm asking for this fund. So, in 2021, the city entered into a letter of intent with Meridium to do kind of a public-private partnership to install fiber in the city of Bloomington. And a master development agreement was signed in June of '22. TIF was created. It's called a Spider TIF, was created in June of '22. And everything sort of proceeded from there, and fiber was starting to be installed throughout the city of Bloomington. Earlier this year, around February, we started hearing some noise that there were some problems with a subcontractor that Meridium had hired, which was AEG or True Line. They've had some different names. So, we did some due diligence. Ended up, the legal department in late March filed a notice with the insurance company that held the bond for AEG True Line. So, when people do work in the right of way, they're often required to get a bond, an insurance policy essentially, to protect the city from any damage done in the right of way. And so, we filed a written notice with the insurance company. It was Sampo International doing business as Lexon Insurance Company. And it was, we had a million-dollar bond. And so, long story short, we submitted information to them in late March, and we received a check for $1 million on July 8th. It was given to the controller's office. She's held it. It could just probably be deposited into the General Fund. However, we would like a separate fund to be created to hold this $1 million so that, and then we will be back to the council to ask for appropriations of that $1 million. So, tonight, I'm not asking for appropriation. We're just asking to create the fund. That $1 million will be deposited in there. And when we're ready to come back and ask for appropriations, we'll come back. It's really too early to tell how that money is gonna be spent. We have fines related to AEG's work in the right of way. There are actual repairs being done in the right of way. But Meridium, who we have the agreement with, remember, the city never had an agreement with AEG. We had an agreement with Meridium. They've been a great partner. So far, they have been very responsive. They have, we've got another contractor out there doing work in the right of way. They are also bonded. And repairs are being made. I'm sure there are still issues that need to be remedied. But it's too early to tell right now where we're gonna need that $1 million, so we're not asking for an appropriation. This is just a fund creation. I can tell you that this has been a true collaborative effort on many city departments. So, while we are the ones who, you know, started the legal action to get the bond payment, there's been a ton of work done by Engineering and Public Works, ITS, Controller, the Mayor's Office has been involved. Just a lot of different agencies or departments within the city have had to be responsive to getting the information to the insurance company and getting the information to the new contractor to start doing the repairs. So, tonight, it's really just a very simple housekeeping. Please create the fund so we can put the $1 million in it. But we'll have an opportunity to talk more about details as we get farther along and when we're asking for appropriations. Happy to answer any questions. I'm here. Jessica's here for the controller for financial questions, I think. Rick Dietz, is it Rick Dietz? Rick Dietz is online. We also have Andrew from Engineering, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Rice. The, within, I think, Section 2, it says that the allowable funds, the fund can be used for any lost cost, damage caused by AEG's work, blah, blah, and ends by saying, or any other lawful purpose.
Yeah.
So, explain to us both why that language is necessary, and whether, you know, does that open up the fund to be, you know, what is captured by any other lawful purpose within this fund?
Excellent question. And I don't really know what the gamut of uses could be, but I sure didn't wanna limit us. And so, I didn't say any other purpose, but we said any other lawful purpose.
Yeah.
I don't think there are, again, we were, when we, when Andrew's office sort of looked at fines, there were, could, if you calculated per day, there could be millions of dollars to find. There might actually have to be, you know, repairs in the right of way. It may be that we wanna use this fund for something else sort of IT-related. I just wanted to leave it as general as possible. And we may have to have conversations at some point, you know, with, for example, State Board of Accounts, about how could we use this? And so, I just put that catch-all in there to save us in case some creative idea comes up and we wanna be able to use it that way.
But the primary goal is the mitigation of current expenses incurred, particularly for residents and right-of-way issues, right?
If, no, we won't be using this money for payment to private individuals. This will be for city use.
Fantastic.
And we do expect the contractor that Meridium is working with now, the second contractor, to do the repairs in the right of way, so, but we.
Outside of the funding.
Yeah. We're hopeful that we won't have to use a lot of this because they'll make it all good.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, cuz that was the question about whether this is right-sized, you know, if we had, if we're actually meeting the, okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Well, actually, my colleague just asked the questions that I was asking, but I was wondering about the potentially unknown damages that could have occurred. I mean, where, is that the $1 million gonna be in there?
I don't, it is, I'm gonna say again, it's too early to tell whether it's gonna be, but adequate or not. I can tell you, though, that your question made me think of another department I didn't mention that's been affected, which is utilities. And so, and they've also been very helpful. But as time goes on and as things, you know, freeze and thaw, and we see damages, you know, that we don't see right now, but we might see in another, you know, six months to a year, we're, we are kind of slow-rolling it a little bit on this because we do wanna see how much the contractor gets done, what other damages show up. And, and, you know, we're, we felt very good that we, in fairly quick order, got $1 million back, got the whole bond recovered. But it was really because of the record-keeping, I think, of many of the other departments that helped us recover the $1 million bond, which was the full amount.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Council Attorney Lehner, do you have a comment?
Rick Dietz has raised his hand online.
Okay. Mr. Dietz, do you have something to add to one of the questions that was already asked?
Only, I suppose, to echo Marjorie's statement, but also to, you know, amplify that by saying, any, any new, you know, discoveries of, you know, issues, you know, will be forwarded to M Street Fiber, you know, Meridium for, to fix. You know, even if there are issues that have occurred, you know, occurred in the past, you know, we anticipate that there will be issues of, you know, that, you know, that we discover that need to be, you know, addressed, you know, over time. And so, you know, our understanding and our expectation is that they will address those issues. And as such, the, you know, the funds shouldn't have to be used for the purposes to which they are already pledged to address.
Okay, thank you. Are there other first-round questions? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and take one, Councilmember Asari, before we go to you for second round. And it actually has to do with the same section, too. So, thank you, Attorney Rice, for mentioning that this fund will not go to residents who might have had personal property damage. might have had personal property damage, but if there are residents who did have personal property damage and they have not been able to get any kind of response thus far, what should they do?
I might look to Andrew for this. This is probably his bailiwick. However, I know that his office is keeping a list of all the issues, and so, I don't know if you want to address that.
Thank you. If you could introduce yourself for the record, too, that'd be great.
Sure. Andrew Seabor, City Engineer with Engineering Department. If a resident has experienced issues as a result of this project, they have a number of options that they can do. Ultimately, the best tool I would encourage people to use is U Report and to submit something through the U Report system that will flag things for staff. They can also send an email or call the Engineering Department with an inquiry. We get a lot of calls on this project. Ultimately, what we will do on our end is put them in contact with the owners of this project, M Street Fiber, and we're just more of a facilitator in this case. And generally, the M Street Fiber and their partners have been responsive, especially at least in our interactions with them and making that connection happen.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Asari, second round.
This may be a question for all of us, I don't know, but thinking in a broader sense about what we've learned through this process, are we making any adjustments to our procurement practices, particularly in large, sort of, infrastructure projects?
That is also an Andrew, probably a Rick question. I could say, from a legal perspective, it's very difficult when you're dealing with a main person and then they have a subcontractor, and then there are subs underneath there, you know? And again, not to get too much into the weeds, but, you know, there's legal activity going on in Miami-Dade, Florida, related to AEG True Line, and they have an assignment, and it's, you know, it's listed, I was looking at one of the pleadings, it was in the complex litigation, sort of, division of this court, and so, it's very hard when you're dealing with a, you know, a company, and again, Meridium's counsel that I deal with is in New York. He's been great. He's very responsive, but there are moving pieces related to this kind of big project in Delaware companies, litigation going on in Florida. It's very hard to know who your partners are doing business with, and when we write these contracts and we allow them the freedom that they need to pick the contractors, there are going to be some inherent risks with it. Having said that, the bond is always, we always do require bond, and again, it's been helpful in this regard, and we got it back. I don't know whether Rick, who has dealt since 20, probably before 21, has dealt with Meridium, he might have something to say. I don't know what Andrew thinks about it.
Sure. Scan, Andrew Seabor, City Engineering. I think there's a few things I want to highlight, and then I also want to make sure I'm answering your question, but this project, I think, from an engineering department perspective, has received a lot of, there's a lot of confusion. Like, this is a citywide fiber project, so the word "city" is in there. The city is supportive of this project. The city has a master agreement. There's a lot of things, but when it comes to the actual construction and the work happening, think of it like any other utility. Think of it like a Duke project, a Vectren project, a Smithville project. We are not involved in the selection of the contractors. If Smithville wants to fire, hire Contract X, and then Contract X, we can't say yes or no to them. That is their choice. It is our role to permit their work and make sure that what they're doing follows all the city's conditions. So, so just a little clarifying there, but that being said, on the permitting side, there are some things that we are, that we're going to be changing, how it has happened in the past. One is we're expecting higher bonds, just to further protect the city. We're also going to be limiting the number of active permit areas at any given time, so we want this project to happen, we want it to happen quickly, but we also want to make sure things get closed up before we start the next one. So finding that right balance. I might be missing a couple others, but welcome, Director Dietz, to add to it.
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. There were a couple of other things that we discussed, and I believe we shared some of this already in response to some of the budget questions that came in, but another thing that we had talked about, and this is under consideration by Andrew and his team in terms of permitting, is having, you know, M Street Fiber also be, you know, a party to the permits that are filed by its subcontractors. And then there's been some discussions about increasing, increasing the size of the, you know, the bond requirement for the work that's to be done. So it's, you know, something in excess of the million amount, which is, has been the standard for these types of projects in the past. So there's a number of tools that Andrew and his team and we all are exploring so that we have, you know, greater accountability and if things go wrong, a greater ability to recover.
Great. Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay. Yeah, I have one last one, too, actually, and it's kind of related to what I asked before in terms of residents, and it might sound kind of weird, and I'm not sure quite who it's a question for, but it's that idea of, like, how do we know if something that we're seeing is actually a problem that a resident should report or we should report? And the example that I'll give is that in my particular neighborhood, they had to go through, like, twice and actually install things. So we have, like, little round circles in our neighborhood, and then we have the big boxes, and a whole bunch of the little round circles are gone, so then there's just a hole. And I don't really know what's in the hole, but, you know, like, water could get in the hole, and it's kind of all over the place because they installed these in our ditches, and our ditches flood all the time. So, it, like, is that, like, what rises to the level of a problem, and how do we know that? Because we don't, I don't want, like, you getting called for, like, all kinds of things, but I also don't want there to be serious things that are actually problems.
I'm, my answer would be, if in doubt, have them completed U Report, and it'll get to the right department, and then they can go out and determine if it's related to this and if it needs to go on the list. I would rather have over-reporting at this point than under-reporting, especially since we have a viable contractor out there doing work.
Do you have anything to add?
I think, I would just echo what Margie just reported. Don't hesitate. I'd rather have it. It's a little extra work for us, but hopefully, it's already on our list, and if it's not, we're literally walking every street they're working to make sure things are repaired. So it's a very time-intensive effort, but any help like that, that does help us.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Asari, last.
There's one very last question, and this sort of follow-up to something you were saying, as relates to the sort of information that has existed in the public realm about this project. We've adopted as one of our, you know, outside of constructing joy, we've also said that transparency was something that we care about. So how, what are we doing, sort of, moving forward to inform? Because I've seen, for example, there's started to go back, I've, like, seen the crews now working on certain places, but people often ask me about, like, what's the status of this, and so, is there some place, some centralized place that people can go to get updated information on where we're at on this project, where, you know, where things are sort of expected to go forward, what are our benchmarks, those type of questions?
Yeah. I'll punt to Director Dietz, probably, as the best answer. My team's working with his.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So, one place to go is, you know, the primary ISP, who is, you give it now, they have information about the progress of network, or progress of the availability of their services, then also M Street, M Street Fiber, and then we have information on our website, on the slash Fiber page, that's a little bit out of date, but we anticipate updating that soon, in the next few weeks, when we learn more about the restart of the construction phase, which we're, which we're looking forward, forward to in the coming, coming weeks. To your earlier point, Councilmember Asari, about activity that's visible now, the activity that is going on now is, you know, restoration of incompleted, you know, and I'd say restoration and fixes of construction work that, that needs to get back to 100% from where AEG left it. There is not currently new construction happening, although it's possible that some amount of that will begin as it goes through the permitting process in the coming weeks, but that will also be a, you know, an open and public process. And I'm fairly certain that the city, you know, will also be making information available when, when the, the construction phase is restarted in earnest, so it should not be a surprise to anybody when that happens.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Let's go ahead and move to public comments now on ordinance 202534. So if there are any members of the public who would like to comment about this ordinance, if you're in chambers, you can make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand. It sounds like maybe we have somebody online?
We do.
Wonderful. When you're unmuted, you can go ahead and start. You'll have up to three minutes, and please make sure to introduce yourself for the record.
Yes. Kevin Keel. I'm just reading up on this with open source information, and it seems like there was an eight-million-dollar fine, which you're not going to collect. Obviously, they went bankrupt. My question basically is, is there an estimate about, what is the exposure to the city for all these damages and things that this subcontractor failed to do? And then, is, I just want to make sure we get a, some type of assurance, but the main contractor will have to, to pay for all that. So I'm just unclear about who's really liable. Is the main contractor who had the subcontractor, is he ultimately liable for all the damages caused by the subcontractor? And also, would he be open, this main subcontractor, to the fines that were assessed against their subcontractor? So I was confused by that, and it'd be nice to have some clarification, but I'll just, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments online?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see anybody moving forward in chambers, so we'll move back to council for further questions or final comments on ordinance 202534. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
It's a follow-up question, if I may. So the million dollars will not be used to actually fix the mistakes, so what will it be used for? compensated for all the staff time, or?
And I may ask Jessica to come up here in a minute. You know, when, as the former, as the public comment was just made, there could have been assessed up to, you know, over seven million dollars in fine, though that money could go into the fund where we just collect fine money and be used, sort of, generally to reimburse the city. We have spent a lot of staff, it's, I don't think it's going to go to the I T S department and to the legal department to reimburse them for staff time. But, and I, and I do want to say, though, in response, I think the problems will be fixed. I mean, I think the problems in the right-of-way are going to be fixed by the current contractor, subcontractor. So those will be fixed, and this money hopefully will not have to be used for that. What creative uses or ideas come out if we don't have to use it for right-of-way? I'm going to leave that to the departments. I've been saying all along, is, we've got to get farther along, we've got to see where we land. I fully expect Meridium to make the city whole. We will end up where we need to be at the end of this, with the fiber installed and working, but I think that we, again, it's too early to say right now how this million dollar is going to be used. I think we wait, get the project done, and see where we stand.
I don't know if Jessica, do you have anything to add to that?
Okay. She's, she agrees. Hopefully, that answers it. Thank you.
I, I'm really sorry, but I don't think that answered the question. So we don't know what the money will be used for, is that the answer?
Yeah, no, it's too early to tell. Yeah. It's, yeah, it's way too early to tell exactly how we're going to use this million dollars. And that's really your question, right? Is how's the million? I don't know at this point. We will come back at some later point and ask for appropriations, but I'd be completely making something up if I were to give you something definite now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for not making something up.
Thank you. Any other comments or last questions from council members? Great. Then I think that we're ready to call the roll on ordinance 202534.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, and that passes unanimously on to the next.
I move that Resolution 2025-16 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance, or Resolution 202516. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Will the clerk please read? Resolution 2025-16, requesting the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission to make a recommendation for expenditure of food and beverage tax revenues. The synopsis is as follows: This resolution is a request from the common council for the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission to recommend expenditures of food and beverage tax revenue toward a 2026 budget for the Capital Improvement Board. Thank you.
I move Resolution 2025-16 be adopted.
Second.
Wonderful. Looks like somebody's already moved to the podium to present. Are we going to do a switcheroo again, or? I'm just kidding. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you very much, council. I'm Jeff McKim. I'm the treasurer for the Capital Improvement Board. I have with me John Weichart, the president of the Capital Improvement Board, and Jeff Underwood, our comptroller. So you will remember that the Capital Improvement Board presented our 2026 budget request to you a few weeks ago during your budget work sessions. Because the C I B budget is funded by the food and beverage tax, statute requires an additional procedure specific to that fund source. Statute requires the common council, as legislative body of the city, to request the advisory commission's recommendations concerning the expenditure of any food and beverage tax funds. The resolution in front of you would make such a request for a recommendation from the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission, otherwise known as FAB-TAC. After FAB-TAC meets and makes a recommendation, approval of the C I B's 2026 budget will come back to council in the 2026 Civil-City Budget Appropriations Ordinance, which is one of the three appropriations ordinances the council will consider during your budget adoption process. So thank you very much, and we are here to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you. Do council members have any questions? Great, seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on Resolution 202516, if you're in chambers, you can make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab. I don't see anybody moving in chambers. Is there anybody who's raised their hand online? Okay, then, coming back to council, are there any comments or questions that have come up since I asked, last asked? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 202516? Will you give me just a moment, Councilmember Stasburg? Okay. Thank you. I'm going to have to do this a little bit on the fly, so forgive me if I get the order incorrect, but I believe we'll start with Councilmember Ruff.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Asari?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you. Rallo?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Rallo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes 8-1, and moving on to the next.
I move that Resolution 2025-15 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and introduced, or, it's been moved and seconded to introduce Resolution 202515. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion? Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Ruff? Or did I already call you?
Yep.
I'm just going to keep on calling in so I can get this working again. Thank you so much. Are you able to read? Is that working? Yeah, we'll figure that part out. Okay. Thank you. Resolution 2025-15, to establish expectations and procedures for council member liaisons, yeah, liaisons to boards and commissions. The synopsis is as follows: This resolution, sponsored by Councilmember Zulik, establishes expectations and processes for council members serving as liaisons to city boards and commissions. Thank you.
I move that Resolution 2025-15 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulik?
Hello, everyone. This is actually just a, it's a formalization into code of something that we already passed as a full council in terms of expectations for liaisons to different boards and commissions. In short, the chair of the interview committees will appoint each of their interview committee members to be a liaison to two to three boards and commissions so that we can keep more of an eye on what they're doing and so that their work can be celebrated and spoken about at council meetings. So it's, it's in line with a proposal that we've already passed, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but nothing has changed since then. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilmembers about this? And for, just for clarity, we didn't actually pass it before we kind of agreed to the intent and concept. Yeah. Councilmember Asari, did I see your hand?
Okay, so, so question for all of us, I guess, or for, what happens if, so within the committee, so, so I'm on a committee with councilmember Stasburg, councilmember Rosenbarger. What happens if I go, nah, I don't want to be on that committee? Not like, what, or vice versa, you know, if, if, the question is, how do we ensure that people actually get assigned? And how do we, because, I mean, and what are, what's actually our mechanism here for following up on such a thing, right? So, so imagine, let's, let's put it here that if, if councilmember Stasburg and councilmember Rosenbarger decide that I should be the representative, because we do the committee that hires for black males as an example, and I go, I don't want to do that, what happens?
I would imagine it's a pretty similar process for appointments to boards and commissions that we do for the entire council, where the council president works with all of the different council members to identify the areas of interest. It's not a huge commitment. It's primarily just being the point person for the different staff liaisons and attending one meeting per calendar year.
How does that three, but yeah, because it's three in the, in the.
Right, per border commission. So it's just one meeting for each liaison assignment.
The three times is checking in with them at least three times a year.
But then, like, like, do, I'm just curious if we need some type of mechanism within this, within this to actually make sure that something happens, right? Because, because, and then similarly, we have a report. Is that report supposed to be a written report? Is it an oral report during report time? Like, well, you know, what's our, otherwise, otherwise, like, it's, it's, I get, we all get the intention, right? I mean, we, we passed, we voted for the intention of this, but how do we achieve the outcome that we're, that we're looking for is, is the question. And whether that's, whether we have that mechanism in the current, or in the current resolution, or whether we need it. I mean, we could just agree ourselves that this is how we want to do it, but.
I think over-regulating is what gets us into trouble here. So I was imagining that each councilmember would kind of come up with their own strategy of being a liaison to the boards and commissions. If they want to give an oral report, they can, verbal, written.
Are there other questions or perhaps comments or responses to councilmember Asari's question? Because in a lot of ways, this whole resolution is about all of us. I, I'll follow up, because I don't see any hands, that, that I had kind of a similar question of what happens if a councilmember doesn't fulfill these responsibilities? What happens if they don't check in at least three times a year? What happens if they don't go to a meeting a year? Like, what's, what is, how, how much public shaming do we get to do? I'm kidding about the public shaming, but, like, and I don't, I don't think that the sponsor of this necessarily has to answer all of these questions, because it really is, like, in a lot of ways, our job is all about personal accountability, but.
Right.
Yeah, I, may I?
Councilmember Daley?
I, I think it would just be very similar to our regular committee assignments. You know, we'll know if somebody's not keeping up and what happens then. I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but, but some people do. No, but I, I just see this as a way of us having a better understanding of what's happening, not trying to have control over anything, but just feeling more connected to what's going on in our city and the, the boards and commissions that we help appoint people to, and making them feel like they're heard and their work is being acknowledged.
Other questions or comments about that? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, just to back up what councilmember Zulik said, I, we were envisioning, when we were talking about this in the Committee on Council Processes, we were envisioning that people, like, all three people on the interview committee would write down what they're most interested in as far as serving as liaison. And then the chair would just try to put that together and make fair assignments, and then the committee would vote on it. So it seems very unlikely that somebody would, unless they're not interested in anything, that it seems unlikely they would have something that they have no interest in.
I would agree.
I, I also want to point out that this resolution is supposed to start in January of next year, and each year, the president has an opportunity to change interview committees. And so that's the other thing that I want to point out for whoever is president next year in terms of checking in with people that, you know, all, prior to now, the interview committee's just interviewed people, and so it maybe didn't necessarily matter which interview team you were on. But now, since we actually have these, assuming this passes, larger responsibility for each one, there might be interview committees that might be more or less desirable for different members based on their interests. So that is just an additional thing to take into consideration next year. Are there other questions or comments? Councilmember Asari?
I wonder if we should consider, maybe this is, you know, it's not something we need to consider now, but just as we think through this moving forward, is whether such a mechanism might, replace is too strong a word, but whether we can then streamline some of the appointment procedures, because at the end of the day, all of our appointments get made by the whole council. So, you know, whether, whether in essence, you remove the three-body person, people who have to do the interviewing and all that, and we actually just, it's like the liaison is the person who brings that to the larger group. So, you know, because, because we are sort of proliferating our, our, you know, meetings here with, with this, which, you know, is, is fine. I mean, it does give some structure, I think, to something that we've all wanted to do, which is be more involved in, in some of these committees. But then, and the, and so that's, that's one thought. Then the second thought for me is, is the overlapping of, we just, we just made those Title 15 changes, sort of being clearer about the reports that we want from the committees themselves. And so thinking a little bit about how do we make sure that councilmember reports are, you know, complimentary or supportive, or, you know, happening in cadences that make sense so that, so that we're not just sort of duplicating things that we're just going to hear anyways from, from the committees themselves. So I do think we should give some thought, again, we, again, I, I get the sort of informal nature of, of this, but we should give some thought to how are we going to usefully report back to one another so it's not just like, I went to said committee, you know, and, and, you know, like, so, like, what is, what is the useful information that we're reporting to each other, sort of ahead of, of things, right?
Okay, maybe that's the kind of thing that should go into some kind of, like, administrative manual sort of thing, which I think Committee on Council Processes is also working on that, too. Aren't you working on that kind of thing? Uh, Clerk Bolden, did you have something to add to this?
Not quite directly, but I did want to point out that Deputy Clerk Crossley is online, if you have any questions for her as well, related to council committees and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there other questions? I actually have another one that relates to Section four, number four, which says, informing assigned boards or commission chairs and staff liaisons of any relevant legislation being developed or discussed by the council and soliciting feedback from the boards or commissions on said legislation. And I, I'm kind of concerned that there might be a timing issue of that. First of all, who defines relevant and what might be relevant or might, what might not be, but especially in terms of, say, a resolution that might relate to a border commission. If that packet gets released on a Friday for a discussion the next Wednesday, I mean, the chances that there's going to be a meeting of that board and commission within that time that then they would be able to discuss it is, like, low. So I'm, I, I don't quite know how to actually do that.
So that was intended to be a little less formal than full meetings and mostly reaching out to the chair and the staff liaison, who might be able to offer some insight on behalf of those commissions.
I guess that makes me a little uncomfortable to then rely on essentially one member of the commission, and then the staff member to give potentially an opinion on legislation as opposed to the whole commission.
Okay.
I, I mean, I don't know if, I just don't know how, how possible that is all the time to get meaningful feedback from the border commission. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that at all? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I mean, to me, it's, it's understood that the term, the, the phrase "if feasible" is understood in my reading of it, but I know it's not always going to be feasible. But sometimes we, we hear about, you know, or we are, ourselves are working on, or we hear about a colleague working on something way before it comes as legislation, so.
And just like logistically, too, because, again, if we're leaning into the more sort of informal thing, are, are these assignments something that we have to do in like a, in a, in a formal, open-door meeting? Or, for example, can I write my two committee, committee members and say, you know, I'd, I'd like to be liaison for these three things? Like, you know, like, how, do those assignments have to be done officially in an open meeting? Or can we just sort of informally say, I'm going to go to the Status of Black Males Commission?
Like I said, it would be pretty similar to the original, like, boards and commission appointments for councilmembers.
But, yeah, but are we appoint, because we, the, the legislation, the resolution says we appoint internally to the group, but then, but then we're likening it to the president making the appointment. So, so do those appointments have to be official? Or is it enough that I just sort of say, I'll cover that commission?
Would, would our attorney like to answer that? My suspicion would be that, that they have to be made in a public meeting.
Which means we all, yeah, so, I mean.
But Attorney Laner, would you like to clarify the O D L in terms of whether those appointments need to be made publicly or not?
Are you talking about the appointments within the interview committee to a particular board and commission?
Correct.
I, I think that would be done in the committee meeting.
As an official.
Right.
I would imagine it would be in the first committee meeting of the year with just ironing out all the details.
Are there other, are there other questions? All right, let's go ahead and move to public comment on resolution 2025-15. If there's any members of the public who would like to comment on this resolution. I don't see anybody in chambers. Is there anybody online who has raised a hand?
No.
Okay, returning back to council then for any final comments or questions? Are there any final comments? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I just have something to say in general about our commission, our, our committees, interview committees, that I think it's incredibly hard to have three people. So if two people ever talk, it's, it's in violation of open-door law, and I would like to potentially, like, not tonight, but consider, like, I think this is great, I'm happy to support it, but consider having larger committees so that two of us can talk sometimes, just about coordination of, like, who's going to be where, or, yeah.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Are there other comments? I'll go ahead and go. I, I am happy to support this, but I am still nervous about that Section four, number four, because there's not an "if feasible" in there. And I appreciate that it's implied. And of course, like, what happens if we don't fulfill these responsibilities? Like, there's not really a mechanism of consequence for not doing our jobs, at least not, you know, for our term, pretty much. But I, I will make every effort to do this. So if there are no other comments, if the clerk could please call the roll on resolution 2025-15.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So that passes unanimously. So now we're going to move back to the ordinance that we changed the order of earlier.
I move that ordinance 2025-33 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-33. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Yes, Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-33, to establish the Fiber Connectivity Fund for Digital Opportunity Initiatives. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2025-33 establishes the Fiber Connectivity Fund to support broadband access for income qualifying residents, ensuring affordable, high-speed internet, and promoting digital opportunity while also securing annual infrastructure contributions from the developer.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2025-33 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It looks like the comptroller is at the podium, is going to stay there today. If you could go ahead and introduce yourself for the record and tell us what this is all about.
Good evening, council. Comptroller McClellan, I T S Director Rick Dietz and I will be presenting this request to you tonight. This also has to do with the high-speed fiber that is being installed in Bloomington. That was based off of a 2022 agreement with Meridium. And we keep saying Meridium, now called M Street Fiber. There's a lot of names in this, so I'm just going to switch to M Street Fiber. That is the company, that is the main overall company that we are working with now. So M, M Street Fiber and the city agreed to support access to the, the high-speed internet for low-income and affordable housing units in Bloomington back in 2022. There is an agreement that the city will fund, will put a million dollars in a fund to support, to support low-income eligible houses, just to connect to the high, high-speed fiber, and that the, the M Street Fiber will, will match or exceed that amount if, if the, the total cost is over $700. So there's some details in this ordinance that create the fund, that really lay out why the fund is being created, what the fund can be used for, how the city will use the proceeds to, to fulfill this promise that we made in the agreement, and how the city has to use those funds after that agreement expires. And there is an expiration to the agreement. Rick Dietz can answer more questions about that. So really, this is just creating the fund and explaining how it can be used, and then we're going to come back on September 30th and ask for an appropriation of $250,000 into this fund from the general fund. And we decided to do to, to, to fund this fund over four years with $250,000 to kind of spread out that, that, that promise of a million dollars so that we don't have a big hit to the general fund, and it spreads, it spreads it out over four years. We don't have to use the general fund. We can use any fund that is, that can be spent on any lawful purpose of the city. We just chose the general fund because it is our largest operating fund. But we can discuss, I, we can, we can discuss that now, or we can discuss the funding later when we come back for the additional appropriation. But Rick Dietz is online, and he absolutely knows the most about this project, more than anybody else in the entire city. And with Andrew Cyborg, the engineering director, a close second. So he is online to answer probably all of your other questions.
Mr. Dietz, do you have anything to add right now?
No, I think that was a really good summary, and I, I can't think of anything more that needs to be added at this point.
Okay, thank you. Then I think it goes to councilmembers for any questions related to this establishment. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Asari?
Just a, just a really quick one, probably for, for Director Dietz. Just a, just a really quick one, probably for, for Director Dietz. The eligibility criteria, is that set by the city or set by Gigabit Now for the, for low income?
Yeah, that eligibility criteria was defined in our master development
Cool.
agreement, and it's a, a pretty, pretty lengthy list of, you know, existing, you know, low-income qualifying programs for, from the federal government and from, from the state. So, you know, instead of creating an elaborate criteria, we simply say that if a household is receiving supplemental nutrition assistance program, SNAP, or housing vouchers, you know, the Indiana Department of Education, free and reduced, you know, lunches.
Yep.
Any, any of those suffice for eligibility for this. That program is ultimately administered by Gigabit Now, but those were the criteria that we originally defined with, with Meridium in our, our original agreement with them.
And, and that was, thank you for saying that, because that was the part that I was a little unclear about. How does, so a city-administered fund, but then it's administered by Gigabit Now? Like, how, how does that exactly work? Like, that, you know, that an external party is assessing criteria, but then we're funding it? Like, how does that mechanism work?
Yeah, so the, there's two separate things here. The eligibility for the program is one thing, and again, that's been defined in our original agreement. The fund that we're looking to establish here, which we're calling the Fiber Connectivity Fund, the purpose of that is to provide city support for connecting low-income households that are eligible for this program, you know, per the eligibility criteria, to the, the Meridium M Street Fiber Network.
Okay.
And so we're providing, and this is, this is where Controller mentioned the, kind of the split and the allocation. You know, if that cost to connect a unit, a residence, is $700 or less, you know, then the city is providing $350 or less, you know, half of that cost out of this fund that we're establishing. If it's higher than that, then the city's, city's obligation only extends to $350.
So that $350, okay.
And the remainder of the cost to connect that residence or, you know, housing unit to, to the network is, is borne by M Street Fiber.
Okay, fantastic. You answered, you answered my follow-up as well, so thank you.
Are there other questions? Okay, I, I have kind of a clarification question. So in one of the whereas clauses, it specifies establishing a non-reverting fund. And then in the actual section of establishment, I don't see that it says that it's a non-reverting fund that we're establishing. Is that?
It is a non-reverting fund.
Okay. Is saying it in the whereas clause enough? Or did I just miss it in one of the sections?
Let's see here. You probably didn't, you're probably correct. Let's see, reporting an accountability. I mean, it is a non-reverting fund, and the agreement states that it will be a non, the 2022 agreement states that it would be a non-reverting fund. And I think that when we, when we refer back to this ordinance that created the fund, I mean, I agree with you, it should have been in a section, but having it in the whereases is, at least it, I feel like it's not a fatal flaw. At least it is mentioned in the whereases, and any reasonable reader reading this would see that it says it's going to be a non-reverting fund, it's just in a whereas instead of in a section. That would be my interpretation of this. If I go back into the ordinances and look up a fund to try to figure out what's, you know, what is this fund created for, I look at the whole document for any information I can get from that and use that as the law. So I, I mean, from a legal perspective, if anybody challenged it, I don't know, but I don't see it as a fatal flaw for, like, our city being able to do business and relying on this document that created the fund.
Okay. I'm sorry I didn't point that out earlier, or ask that earlier. Council Attorney Laner, do you agree that having it in the whereas clause is suitable in terms of mutual understanding, not just now, but in the future?
Where is it in the whereas clause?
It is in the third whereas clause.
I think it's an open question. I mean, I, I think that one could make all the arguments that the controller just stated.
So do you think that it should be amended to specify?
I think it would be better if it was stated.
Is that an amendment that you all could do on the fly right now?
I'm sorry?
Is that an amendment that you could do right now, quickly, to add in? Non-reverting somewhere in Section 1?
Yes, that, we'd have to prepare it. It has to be in writing. The amendment must be in writing under the code.
Is that something that you can do in, like, 10 or 15 minutes? Because I have a couple other questions too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we can work on that.
Thank you. Are there other questions from councilmembers before I, to my other ones? Okay. This one might be a question for Mr. Dietz. In, oh, where am I? In Section 2, it says that the ITS department and relevant city departments shall develop policies and procedures to ensure effective implementation of, of the digital opportunities initiatives. I was just wondering which departments needed to do that, and if those procedures and policies were already, like, in place, or if those, like, need to be worked on now?
You know, as far as policies in place to utilize these funds, the, the, they, they are for the sole purpose of supporting the connection of low-income units to the network until, until we reach the end of the exclusive period for the ISP, which is five years with two possible one-year extensions, so between five and seven years. At that point, the, at that point, the use of the funds is also governed by the agreement, and it states that they need to be used for, you know, for digital opportunity initiatives. And those would all be, you know, once we reach that point, those would all be budgeted as part of our normal, our normal, you know, process with council approval during, during the year. Also, with regard to policy, that we have a digital opportunity strategic plan that was developed in 2020, and we're in the process of, you know, revising that towards the tail end of, of this year, and perhaps early, early next. And those will essentially be, you know, governing document, documents with regard, regards to our activities in, in that area.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that quite answers your question.
I'm not sure. I think, I think the short answer is that not right now, not until the end of the original ISP period. And then there might be more work, but by then it'll just get budgeted in by itself.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. We would need to, and already are planning to appropriate through the council for the use of these funds, both for the, you know, the current use, you know, and then, you know, in the future, we would be requesting council authorization to use the fund for those other purposes.
Okay, thank you. I have another question. Does anybody else have any questions? Great. And, and this is giving staff plenty of time to, to do this. In your memo, it talks about the city already having received invoices that need to be paid using this fund, and I was just wondering what those invoices currently total?
My, my recollection for those, and I'm sorry I don't have it right of hand, is around 40, 40,000. But that predates the recent, the recent connections at Bloomington Housing Authority complexes, you know, which have, have come online. And in fact, Walnut Woods is, is lit now, and, and probably in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to accept customers coming onto the network. So we anticipate more than that amount by the end of the year.
Great, thank you. Does staff have an amendment written for us yet? Should we recess for five minutes? Let's go ahead and, and recess until, well, it's 8:33 right now, so let's just do 8:38. And that'll give staff a little bit more time. I'm going to need to call us back to order here. So we have been working on an amendment. And so we are working on getting that amendment up on the screen that adds non-reverting to the Fiber Connectivity Fund. I actually have it in front of me right now, so I, I'm going to pass the gavel over to Councilmember Piedmont Smith because I'm technically sponsored to this.
All right. For the benefit of colleagues, let's wait to get this on the screen and the public.
There we go, all motion.
Okay, Councilmember Stasburg?
I would like to move Amendment 1 to Resolution 2025-33.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2025-33. Go ahead, Councilmember Stasburg.
This just adds non-reverting into Section 1. So Section 1 now reads, "There is hereby created a non-reverbing, non-reverting Fiber Connectivity Fund," just to make sure that there is clarity, mostly in the future, for anybody who might see this in five, seven, or more years, when maybe it's not the same councilmembers up there and up here, and maybe not the same staff in City Hall, to make it clear that this, the money in this fund stays in this fund to be used only for these purposes.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any, are there any questions about the amendment? Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak to the amendment? If there's anybody online who wants to speak to this amendment?
No.
Okay. All right, back to council. Any comments on the amendment? I cannot see Councilmember Rallo at this point, but I don't hear anything. I don't see a hand raised. So let's go ahead and go to a vote on Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2025-33.
Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Sulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that amendment is adopted 9-0. I'll pass it back to President Stasburg.
Thank you. Sorry I didn't think of that earlier. So were there any last questions about Resolution, or sorry, Ordinance 2025-33 as amended? Great, let's go to public comment on that then. Is there any public comment related to Ordinance 2025-33 as amended? I don't see anybody in chambers. Is there somebody online?
Yes, there is, all unmuted.
Wonderful. If the online commenter, when they get unmuted, if you could state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Yes, Kevin Keel. Looking at the master agreement, I'm just reading, again, it's open source information about the contractor. The main contractor has three years to substantially complete the, the build-out. And I, by my understanding, is that is the definition of that, is 85% of the premises need to be ready to go by October of 2025, and seeing that it's September 17th now. I just, you know, we're going to put a million dollars in this, but how is, how is the project actually progressing? Is it, 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 does the master agreement need also to be amended or somehow changed to show that they're, or am I wrong? They're not in compliance with the master agreement? It, it's just confusing to me, this, 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 and I didn't expect it, that's what I was just listening in. And I, and I started reading up to it because I was so confused, it just, it seems to be some more issues that aren't even being discussed. And I find that troubling, and it seems we've already had a situation earlier where we're trying to figure out where to put a million dollars from a, a surty bond, but I'm saying, they, they went, they went bust in, in all that exposure there. So anyway, I just wanted to, to add that to the, the mix, just, I'm just, you know, as a member of the public, just so confused about what is going on with this project. Is there been some type of, you know, assessment of where we stand here? How is this, you know, I, I don't, you, you, the quality of the project, how is it, you know, are the citizens getting good value of this? I guess is the bottom, you know, the bottom-line question. It just seems, you know, it just, I, I just, I don't feel comfortable after reading some of this and hearing what the discussion tonight. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public online with a hand raised?
No.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and revert to council for any final comments on Ordinance 2025-33 as amended. Councilmember Rallo?
Well, just to raise the question, I guess, of compliance and, and timing. To Director Dietz or to Ms. Rice?
Director Dietz, do you, is Director Dietz still there? There he is.
Yes. You know, as far as timing, the, the construction is pretty much halfway, halfway done. No one anticipated the, the dissolution of, you know, of AEG in the, in the middle of the project, but we anticipate being able to get back up to speed in the coming, coming weeks and, and months. I'm not sure that that answers your, your, your question or your, your statements.
Well, is this, so the schedule of compliance to 85% or 80% completion, is that feasible in the near term?
It is, it's probably not as originally, originally discussed, but then we've had a year, you know, a year pause in construction because of the, sorry, there was a comment, sorry, I'm hearing something come through.
So we're on a new timetable, in other words? And?
Yeah, likely we will, you know, we will need to adjust our, our timetable because of, because of this.
Okay, can you say this evening what that timetable is in terms of anticipated completion?
I can tell you, we anticipate renewing the construction phase in the next couple of years. of weeks, you know, at least in part. And then at least I would see it, you know, we're probably, you know, at the, at the tail end of, of next year for completion, you know, given that we're about halfway, or a little over halfway through.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other?
Could I ask one more to follow up?
Sure.
If it's, maybe someone else will, but.
Sure.
Mr. Keel talked about satisfaction. Any, any comments on that, Mr. Dietz?
As far as, yeah, customers who have signed up and are using the service, you know, they, they seem very happy with it. I, I don't have a scientific survey of that yet, although we are anticipating doing, doing a survey as part of our Digital Equity Strategic Plan, which will ask about, ask about that. What I can tell you anecdotally, you know, from just the, like, two most recent conversations over the course of the last, you know, probably three weeks, people are happy with the service. You know, again, that's, you know, I think they're happy just with the service period, but they're also happy with the service in comparison to their experience with prior providers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments from council members? I'll just say, just as a matter of information for the public, if you go to bloomington.in.gov/fiber, that is the information about the fiber initiative and that there is a construction progress map on there. And so I assume as construction resumes, that all will be kept up to date. So with that.
That is correct.
Great, thank you. So with that, if the clerk could please call roll on Ordinance 2025-33 as amended. Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That passes unanimously and brings us to the end of our legislation for this evening. We do have a period of additional public comment next. If any members of the public would like to comment on items not on the agenda, who did not comment during our first general period of public comment, I don't see anybody in chambers. Is there anybody online with a hand raised?
We do have someone online. I'll unmute them.
Wonderful, thank you. When you're unmuted, you can go ahead and state your name for the record and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Hey, good evening, council. This is Christopher Emge from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Sorry, I'm not there in person tonight. We, we can be in this community a little bit of a clinic seneca, jaded tourist, but I just wanted to bring up that we have some momentum across some major projects in this city. The recent stadium district that's going to be before you soon, I think is going to create some real new opportunities on the north side with restaurants, entertainment in the iconic IU athletic area. And by using the, the River District tool that the state has provided us, it's going to allow some flexibility with liquor permitting. I think it's going to be a big advantage, tracking new businesses, some high-traffic corridor that we're already seeing with, of course, our great IU football team. And then the Hopewell neighborhood, the redevelopment there, that's shifting the approach to make it easier for local builders and small developers to participate. I think this is exciting. Housing, as we know, is a major issue, as we saw last week in a very effective deliberation meeting. And Trades District continues to advance as kind of an innovation hub for entrepreneurs. I think John Fernandez's steady hand has really made this an anchor for high-tech and creative industries and with IU as a partner, I think. And Boutique Hotel coming in next year, I think this place is going to take off for young professionals. And then, of course, the Convention Center where last week the chamber had its 110th oversold annual meeting is set nicely for expansion, thanks to the Capital Improvement Board. So this is going to be huge and boosting tourism, strengthening downtown. So I think together with these four projects, we're showing how building, how Bloomington is becoming stronger, building for the future, writing in that next chapter of economic development that kind of pushes back against sometimes the narrative of, that we've seen in social media, other places. So I just want to give some shout-outs to everybody working hard to make this a more livable city and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Coming back to council then for any notes on council's schedule. I don't have that written down today, so I'm going to have to get my calendar up. Next week, we have our special session on the 24th, our special budget session, and we will have a committee of the whole to discuss the final budget ordinance. Our next regular session, as I said earlier, is on Tuesday. Tuesday is different, September 30th, also at 6:30 in these chambers. Does anybody else have any notes on council's schedule? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.